This time we'll call the meeting to order. We appear to have a quorum, and we'd like to ask everyone to turn their cell phones on silent or on vibrate. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Brian Booth if he would say the invocation for us.
Dear Lord, as we come before you this segment, dear heavenly Father, Lord, watch over this court, dear heavenly Father, and Lord, continue to watch over ones that are neighboring counties, dear heavenly Father, the officers that's lost their life, watch over their families, dear Lord, in the coming days, dear heavenly Father, and just bless that community, dear Lord. And, Lord, help us to make every right decision for this county, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Ronnie Robertson if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Tackett?
Here.
Commissioner Booth?
Here. We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. Gene, can you hand me an extra ink pen? All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the June 14th. In June 21st, 2022, minutes of the Pike County Fiscal Court, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other questions, discussions? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the adoption of a resolution supporting the filing of a Kentucky Division of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant application in the amount of $321,900 for the Blackberry Volunteer Fire Department Acquisition Demolition Project and Authorization for the Pike County Judge Executive to execute all related documents. Eric will be filing that application for us, and this is the money to move the Blackberry Fire Department up out of the floodplain. As you know, it's flooded twice in the last year or so. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
With a motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
The next item is a discussion of some work that I would propose that we do over at the Phelps Park. I'm not sure that it's ready to be acted on. As most of you know, before we came in, the park at Phelps had been pretty much allowed to exist in a poor state of repair. The pitching machine, the batting cage that was there, the pitching machine had rusted, been letting it sit out in the weather for years. They had refinished the tennis court here a few years ago, is that right, Paul? Doesn't seem to be getting a lot of play. The basketball court is heaven. Basketball goals, you know, one directly across from each other, they're at a 90-degree angle. I'm not sure where that idea came from, but it's sort of hard to play pickup basketball with goals at a 90-degree angle. In my opinion, a park should have grass. It should have an area where kids can play and not worry about being hurt if they fall, whether it's crumb rubber, or mulch, or something along those lines. I would like to see us redo that park and move the playground equipment that's over near the medical clinic out toward the basketball goal. Leave the tennis court, put a new basketball goal beside of it, put the playground equipment in the middle, and have two or three really nice picnic shelters around the playground equipment, so parents could watch their kids play. We could have a few grills built in out there, and we can have some green space. The playground, I'm sorry, the putt-putt course, I don't know how long it's been since it's had AstroTurf on it. I think it needs to come out. It takes up a lot of room, it's all concrete, nobody seems to want to use it, and it would seem to me if we're going to have a park, they need to have grass. They need to be somewhere where kids can go play. I would also propose the playground equipment that is inside the Phelps Pool area be moved out of the pool into this park area. And it may be that we have to buy new playground equipment for it, because some of it's in bad shape. The Freeburn, or I should say the Majestic Park, that's another major problem, and I think Paul would agree with me on this. Paul, can you come up for just a minute? I just want to talk about this, because I'm not sure that... As you start back up toward Majestic, there is a park that's on the left that has been allowed to, you know, it's overgrown, we're having to use inmates to take care of it, and then there's a piece of property, I think, beside of the park that's in a pretty poor state of repair. Is that true, Paul?
Yes, yes.
So, the question is, it's not that far, in my opinion, to go from Majestic over to the park at Johnson Bottom.
Right.
The park at Freeburn is very difficult to maintain, because it's up against the hill. There has been, it's just really hard to maintain it with the manpower, and it stretches already thin county resources. There's been some discussion, I've had some friends of mine mention to me, an area over, as you turn down into Woodman, where at one time, the county had made a picnic area. Are you familiar with that, Paul?
The boat ramp, I remember.
A boat ramp, and they had a picnic area and things like that, and, you know, it's in a horrible state of repair. The first issue on that is, I'm not sure that the county even owns that property.
I don't, I don't, I don't know either.
And, they went over there, they dozed it, they built a boat ramp, but it would seem to me, and Greg lives over in that community, it would seem to me that there's no way to build that and maintain that. And this is for some of my friends, like my buddy Jimmy Woolford that lives over at Stopover, they wanted to see if we could redo that. The problem is, every time it floods, it takes it out.
Mm-hmm.
And, I just wonder what your, that's Commissioner Booth's district, what would your preference be on how we handle trying to take care of particularly those three issues, the park at Freeburn, the park at Majestic, or the mini-park, I'm not sure what you want to call that, it's got a walking track.
Yes, a mini-park, you've got all equipment in the mini-park at Freeburn. I mean, it's really outdated, Jim.
And which one at Freeburn?
Yeah, the mini-park at Freeburn.
Now, which one, are you talking about the one just after you get to?
Right, that's the railroad crossing at Freeburn, going towards Majestic, the small one.
Yeah, okay.
Now, on the boat ramps, you will not believe the people I've had ask, because they do a lot of kayaking and fishing, to work the boat ramps. I mean, I've had numerous and numerous and numerous call me every time I'm older, ask me about the boat ramps. I don't know if the county owns the property or not, but there's several people that's asked to have the boat ramps worked.
How do we, how do we take care of them when every time it floods, it wipes them out? Is that a fair statement, Paul?
Right, yes, yes. Especially the one at Hatfield McCoy. It takes, when it floods, it takes it, it's put in wrong. It needs to be switched around, you know, it's...
They put it into the current.
Right, they put it into the current, and every time it floods, it takes it out.
But you have, I'm telling you, you have a lot of people that uses them. I mean, I don't, the one down at Hatfield McCoy is what we repaired it three or four times.
Yes, now, it's well-used.
Four years.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's not, took a whole lot, the last time, I think, we just pulled stuff back on it. The one at Hatfield McCoy is not as big of a problem as the one at Woodman?
Woodman, yeah.
Have you looked at it, Brian?
The one at Woodman, yeah.
It's all grown up. I don't know how you're ever going to keep that one in any kind of state of repair, given the fact that every time the water gets up, it takes it out.
And, I don't, like I said, I don't believe we own that property at Woodman, I'm not 100% here too, so...
So, you know, I had a local company at Phelps get me an estimate on doing some demolition over at the Johnson Bottom Park. It was awfully close to the 30,000. The more I look at it, given that that project is going to be, I don't know that we can split it out into demolition and then construction. I would recommend that we get with Summit Engineering, let them draw some plans up, let Paul determine whether we own the boat ramp at, or that property at Woodman.
Right, like I said, I don't, I don't believe we own that property at Woodman, that boat ramp.
So, I mean, if we don't own it, I don't know how we can go with it.
I don't know, I mean, I'm not 100% sure, but I don't...
Well, let's find out. Jimmy, Jimmy, I mean, I mean, it was worked previously, and, you know, it's a fund, I just think we need to know if we own it or not. So, let's check on that, and that Commissioner Booth, get with Summit Engineering. If Reggie, you can set that up, let's get a plan, it's your district, let's get a plan that you think would be a good fit for Johnson Bottom, and something that would be really nice for that community, because they deserve better than what's there.
Well, yeah, that's definitely...
I mean, it was, I don't know, you know, they built a skateboard park in there that nobody used, it was just full of garbage. Paul, is it a fair statement that a 50-gallon, a 55-gallon garbage can wouldn't hold the garbage, it was...
True, true.
The basketball goals need to be reoriented. It needs to have a safe space for kids to play, that if one of them falls, they're not going to end up with a brain injury or a broke bone. So...
Yep. How far is it from Woodman to Johnson Bottom?
I mean, five minutes, 10?
Then we got the park right there in Freeburn. About the same?
No, Johnson Bottom and the Freeburn Park, same park. You're probably about five miles from Woodman.
He's the one, you're talking about some part of Majestic, ain't it?
Well, the little Freeburn Park, you're not, you're not a quarter mile, I'll tell you. The little mini-park.
From Woodman, you're not, it's just right there at Woodman. But I think we need to know before we spend any money on that property at Woodman, who owns it. I mean, we need, you know, we don't need to be going over and building boat ramps on property we don't own. But my concern is, how do you build in an area that floods once a year, or twice a year, or three times a year? I mean...
It's not very smart to put playground equipment in or...
Or picnic tables or a boat ramp.
Fix them one, I mean, a big, nice park.
And then we can get Summit while we're doing this to look at how we could reconstruct the boat ramp at Hatfield McCoy Park, to turn it the right way, because it needs to be away from the current. So if you put a boat in, it doesn't, just as soon as you put the boat in, it doesn't do a 180, and you're trying to hold on to it, and it doesn't wash out every time it gets up. It should not be a huge, huge cost to fix that.
Not, not the boat ramp, no.
You could probably put a little black top on it, too. I mean, I don't know if it's turned, turned away from the current, you know?
It's turned into, it's turned into current.
It's forced the black top off on the west, it's forced the black top off.
Concrete?
Yeah.
Black top. You know, so far, concrete down through there, and that way, it's not going to...
Right.
I agree with Brian, a lot of them like to kayak and fish over there, you know?
And we want to, and I've talked to Pete Runyon, we want to get this done, we just want to make sure that we're doing it the right way, and, you know, it's not causing the county more problems or costing more money in the future, so... Would you be willing to, just let's get Summit to look at this Freeburn? They were supposed to get drawings back to us on this. We've got the drawing, but we don't have a scope of work, and that way, at one of the next court meetings, we can put it out for bid, once you decide what you want to do in terms of reconfiguring that. I would think we would need to keep the tennis court, reconfigure the basketball court, have some green space with some picnic shelters and playground equipment in the middle, like I said, so two or three picnic shelters where people could watch their kids play, you know, while they're cooking, or while they're doing whatever family activity, and I think it would be a huge asset to that community. We want to do it in a way also that's not going to create a lot of ongoing maintenance burden for the county, you know, the less grass and weeds that we have to take care of, and that may be why they did all the asphalt over there.
I don't know.
But it still just doesn't look right, and it's not, in my opinion, it's not something that would be safe for children to play on. So, we're...
That's fine. Well, I mean, whenever Summit wants to go, I'll go with them.
All right. So, we'll skip over the rest of this one on the Phelps Park. The next one is the second reading of a proposed amendment to ordinance number 040522.012, adding section four. Colonel Downey, would you please present that second reading?
Second reading of the amendments to, proposed amendments to ordinance number 04.05.22.012. Gentlemen, what we are doing here is, we are adding a new section three in the old section three, which is the penalty phase, becomes section four. Section three, "It shall be unlawful for anyone to place trees, tree trimmings, or other tree debris by the side of county roads and creeks. Any and all tree waste or byproducts need to be taken to contracted sites where sites approved by the Pike County Road Supervisor."
All right, is there a motion to adopt the amendment to ordinance number 040522.012, adding section four?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. I made one mistake here. We did not have a roll call vote on the adoption of the resolution supporting the filing of the grant for the hazard mitigation for the Blackberry Volunteer Fire Department. We had a motion by Commissioner Booth, a second by Commissioner Tackett. Is there any other question or discussion on that? Was it one we missed? What we voted on?
We voted on two.
Okay, it was one we missed, I'm sorry. All right, me strike that. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution supporting the filing of a Kentucky Division of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant application in the amount of $84,000 for Mountain Water District's Belfry Satellite Office Relocation Project and Authorization for the County Judge Executive to execute all related documents?
Motion.
Eric, the motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, my bad. All right, the next one is the second reading of a proposed ordinance amending the Pike County Administrative Code, section 462 for sick leave, section two, subsection A. Colonel Downey, can you please present the second reading on that?
Section 462 Sick Leave Subsection Two Subsection A. Section 462 Sick Leave. One, all full-time employees should be granted two working days sick leave credit with pay for each completed calendar month of continuous service. The employee must have been paid for at least half of the days in the month to earn sick leave days. Sick leave may be accumulated not to exceed 60 days. To be eligible to use earned sick leave, the employees must meet the following conditions: be absent from work for at least four consecutive days except in the case of surgery, hospitalization, visits to after clinics, urgent care clinics, or physician appointments with a doctor's note. Deleted is the employee will not be paid for the first three days except in the case of surgery or hospitalization.
Is there a motion to adopt this proposed amendment to Pike County Administrative Code, section 462 for sick leave, and this amends section two, subsection A?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. Finn, anything?
Yes. We had a bid opening on June 23rd on bid number 35-2022. It is for one 2022 newer full-size SUV. One bid was received, it was from Walters GM here in Pikeville, total delivered cost of $68,660. The vehicle meets all the specifications that were in the bid package. It's my recommendation that we award the bid to Walters GM for a bid price of $68,660.
Is there a motion to award bid 35-2022 to Walters GM for the sum of $68,660?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson.
What is this vehicle for?
To be used by the commissioners, the judge, judge's staff, the older, just so the public knows, the, none of us have vehicles. The vehicle we've been using was one that's, was left over from the Freddie Lewis administration when he was jailer. It's got a lot of miles on it. We also have another hand-me-down from the jail that's, that's got some, that Commissioner Tackett drove it this week, it's got some issues. Not sure if both of those vehicles will end up being traded at some point in the near future, but the, particularly with the trail system that we're working on, we do need a large SUV, and this was the only one that we could find. Took some time to find it, this is one Commissioner Robertson that you had expressed interest in previously, so... Okay. It's not going to be assigned to anybody, it'll be here for the courthouse for use by staff, particularly myself and the commissioners, if they have to go out and look at something or, you know, have to haul stuff, stuff or move stuff, so... Good. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Ronnie, second.
Oh, Ronnie, second. Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the, anything else, Greg? County Road Supervisors Report. Mr. Little, you have anything, sir?
I was just going to say that through the rain event that we had, we did have some flooding, most of it was up in the Shelby Inn area, up in there, but we've got most of that under control. We did have a lot of trees countywide that we're still cleaning up from that. Luckily, the other two storms that's passed by has not been as bad as what they had forecasted, so we kind of dodged a bullet there.
We had a lot of damage on my creek. Left Fork Island Creek had quite a bit of damage, particularly to the state road. I mean, it was...
We had, we had two small slides up in, on the head of the Left Fork Island Creek. We removed one slide yesterday, we still have several trees to move, basically like up in Sleepy Hollow. We had, we had some up there.
Yeah, I've seen some pictures up in the main head, it's completely out of banks.
Yeah.
It was something, because it's on Island Creek and Suckies Creek, Right Fork and Suckies Creek, both.
Yeah.
You know, and then I guess the way that you had Peter's Branch and...
Sugar Camp Branch.
...a lot of our blacktop favor.
No, actually, we actually did survive a lot. I mean, I think from what I've been able to see, we've only had one place where we had new, new blacktop that may have buckled a little bit, but it wasn't severe.
It was, it was mostly state road, not county road.
On Left Fork, okay, yeah.
I've not seen a whole lot of damage to county roads.
The Marshall Branch got hit a little bit on Lone Fork, didn't it?
Yeah, we did, now, I mean, it's just like Peter, you know, on Peter's Branch, there was, there's, you know, there's damage there that we have to, we have to fix. We're kind of waiting on the, I was there this morning trying to dig a footer, but the water still isn't low enough yet, so...
I looked at it there.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Another question is, I've had a lot of calls, there've been a lot of people that's had private drains that has got washed out. We was talking yesterday, some of them people that can't afford, and I understand we can't buy it, you know, but you was telling me something about a...
If it was, from my understanding, and honestly, Nee would probably answer this more than I will, but my understanding was that there was a, they did approve for, if it was flood damage, that they could apply for an SBA, or a low-interest loan, to, to help with this flood damage. Because, see, we wasn't, we didn't qualify for the, the personal damage through FEMA, but they did approve for that SBA, that low-interest loan. Am I correct in that? I think...
That's right.
Yeah.
Got approved for SBA.
Yeah, so they could apply for that SBA loan.
Okay. That's a knee question, I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, maybe, but it was, they, it is, I mean, he could answer it more in-depth than I can, but I do know that, that they did approve that we could, that those homeowners, if it was flood damage, they could apply for the SBA loan.
Now, that's previous flood damage, that doesn't include the last two days.
That was back on the January...
That's right, yeah, well, that's what you was talking about.
You're referring, he's referring to the current flood damage.
Oh, to the one that just happened?
Yes, this week.
No, no, I'm sorry.
No, there's no...
I misunderstood, I thought we were talking about the previous flooding.
No, no, I'm talking about just, like, this week.
Oh, yeah, no, there's...
There's been no disaster declaration, there's no way it's going to meet the threshold, so, I mean, that's like I mentioned to Mr. Little, I've got a drain, one of my drains stopped up with a tree, I've got a deep freeze, and some other appliances stuck in my drain that I'm going to have to pay for, rent an excavator and go up there and pull out. Garbage bags, I mean, I got bags of garbage that have washed up around, it's, it's a mess.
You know, I was looking at one drain on Peter's Branch this morning, it looked like that the water backed up through there and washed out the backside of, on up in the hollow. Did you notice that?
Mm-hmm.
There on the left?
Yeah.
Had it, had it bound to come across the top, is that what it was?
It did.
Okay.
But if they still lost a drain next to the county road, if they furnish the drain, we will...
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
As long as they get Mr. Kaiser and get the right size.
As long as they size the drain, they allow, they, you know, they purchase the drain that Mr. Kaiser says, then, yeah, we will put those in.
Oh, I told you.
But, now, when we put those in, it is kind of at our, when we can.
Right.
When we can get to it, because we still have all of our other work we're doing also.
And actually, we still got one of those situations in Cabin Fort, too.
We do, yeah.
I thought the way I seen the water up in Island Creek, in the head of Island Creek, on the Left Fork, I thought a drain had stopped up or something, the way it was coming down, but, you know, we just had a flash drain, I guess it's the way you...
It's just a cloudburst between Suckies Creek and, it's like it went up that ridge line, you know, separating Shelby Creek back over to Island Creek.
And we had small, you know, we had small damage on, basically, just about every road in, in your area.
Twenty-three.
But, it wasn't severe damage, it was just nuisance, that stuff, but...
Just enough to aggravate.
We did have a lot of, we did have a lot of issues.
Yep.
But that was the only thing I had, I was just going to comment about the, about the flooding.
All right, thank you, sir. Next item is treasurer's business, Mr. Stacy.
Acknowledged receipt of the fiscal year 2022-23 salary schedule effective June 26, 2022.
Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the FY 2022-2023 salary schedule effective June 26, 2022?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorize a check in the amount of $16,114.52. Authorize a check in the amount of sixteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents to Coal Run Fire Department for, uh, pass-through insurance, uh, proceeds for a damaged fire truck.
Is there a motion to authorize a check in the amount of sixteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents to the Coal Run Fire Department for insurance proceeds received on the damaged fire truck?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question, discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Next item is, uh, go ahead, Frankie, I'm sorry.
Authorize a check in the amount of eighteen thousand, fifty-two dollars and fifty cents to Justice Muffler Shop for demo and cleanup of two sites on the FEMA Pond Creek Hazard Mitigation Grant. Uh, those were awarded on bid number twenty-two of twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a motion to authorize a check in the amount of eighteen thousand, fifty-two dollars and fifty cents to Justice Muffler Shop for demo and cleanup of the two sites on the FEMA Pond Creek Hazard Mitigation Grant? Bid number twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-two.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question, discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
And where this is the first court meeting of a new fiscal year, uh, I have some standing orders, uh, I'd like to get approved. Authorize a standing order to pay training incentive payments through payroll for elected officials as documentation is received from DLG.
Is there a motion to authorize a standing order to pay training incentive payments through payroll for elected officials as documentation is received through DLG?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question, discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorize a standing order with the Pike County Clerk's Office in order to place or release liens, tag entitled vehicles, record deeds, or any other business necessary for the fiscal court.
Is there a motion to authorize a standing order with the Pike County Clerk's Office in order to place or release liens, tag entitled vehicles, record deeds, or any other business necessary for the fiscal court?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question, discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Authorize a standing order for postage to mail the annual and quarterly solid waste bills for residential and commercial customers as needed, plus any other commu- uh, customer-related communication mailings.
Is there a motion to authorize a standing order for postage to mail the annual and quarterly solid waste bills for residential and commercial customers as needed, plus any other customer-related communication mailings?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question, discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorize a standing order for checks to Anna Pinson, the Circuit Court Clerk, for filing fees of any small claims cases for delinquent occupational tax, net profit tax, or solid waste account as needed.
Is there a motion to authorize a standing order for checks to Anna Pinson for filing fees of small claims cases for delinquent occupational tax, net profit tax, and solid waste accounts as needed?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question, discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorization to pay Anna Pinson Spears, the Pike County Court Clerk, her statutory responsibility as law librarian, six hundred dollars through payroll once per fiscal year.
Is there a motion, um, to pay Anna Pinson Spears the statutory six hundred dollar fee as county law librarian through payroll once per year?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question, discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorize a standing order for checks to reimburse the Pike County Sheriff's Office for pass-through funds received for a US, uh, ATF deputy salary.
Is there a motion to authorize a standing order for checks to reimburse the Pike County Sheriff's Office for pass-through funds received for US ATF deputy salaries?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Authorize a standing order for checks to reimburse the Pike County Sheriff's Office for pass-through funds received for the fish trap lake detail. Uh, that's Army Corps Engineer money.
Is there a motion to authorize a standing order for checks to reimburse the Pike County Sheriff's Office for pass-through funds received for the fish trap lake detail from the Army Corps of Engineers?
Motion.
We would tie. We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Who had second? By?
Okay.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question, discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
And the last one is to authorize a standing order for checks once funds are received for the CDBG-dash-CV Pikeville Senior Citizens Project. And that's pass-through money, uh, we've got like three to four days to, once we receive the funds, to pass them out, so.
Right. Is there a motion to authorize a standing order for checks once funds are received for the CDBG-CV Pikeville Senior Citizens Project?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question, discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
That's all I have, Judge.
All right, sir. Do we have need for executive session? All right. Mr. King, could you please instruct the, uh, court and the public on the relevant provisions of the Kentucky Open Meeting Law as it pertains to the entry into executive session by a fiscal court?
Just need personnel, not?
Personnel, maybe litigation.
Okay. Sixty-one, eight, ten, C and F, uh, for proposed pending litigation and specific personnel action.
Your motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we will be in recess, uh, for executive session and return at the call of the chair. Is there a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, um, it is my motion to hire Shannon Smallwood as a weed mower at Road Lot Four at a three-H rate of pay effective six-eight-twenty-two. To hire Stephen Lane as a carpenter in Public Works at a five-H rate of pay effective seven-eleven-twenty-two. To hire Connor Addington as a loader at Solid Waste Lot One at a two-H rate of pay effective seven-five-twenty-two. To accept John Murphy's resignation effective seven-six-twenty-two. And to extend William Church's sixli- sick leave for three months based on his written request in conformance with the County Administrative Code. And that request dated seven-six-twenty-two. And also to hire Roger Anderson as a mechanic at the maintenance garage at a five-H rate of pay effective seven-eleven-twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question, discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. That brings us to the Department Supervisor's comments. It's, it's a Thursday night. I know people have stuff to do. Does anybody from any of our departments have anything to, uh, bring to the court's attention? All right. Deputy Judge Hickman, anything, sir? Anything from the Sista County Attorney's position? Yes, sir.
Judge, uh, you had asked me about the road ordinance. It is in a draft form. Hopefully you've seen that, uh, but I do know that the county attorney, the deputy judge, the road commissioner and all, road supervisor. And I have not gotten together as a group, but we've all talked about it individually with back and forth. And I've also given that to the commissioners, uh, for them to look over. So I think unless somebody calls me and tells me, no reason not to, we should be ready to discuss that at our next public regular normal meeting.
I've got the draft. I've not looked at it yet. I appreciate the work you've put in on it, and, uh, we'll get together, take a look at it, and we'll be, we'll be ready to discuss it the next court meeting. Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. King, anything from the County Attorney's Jo- Office? Mr. Little?
Sorry, but he brought up that I had a couple of calls about.
Yes, sir.
Not trying to make it long, but just to address this a little bit.
It was something, I had a couple of calls about an article that was, uh, wrote in the paper, and I'd never read the article, but they called and they was scared thinking that we were going to automatically start taking roads out of the road system, you know, and I've explained to them that no, that wasn't the case, that this was, you know, to set forward on how we would accept roads into the road system, uh, and stuff like that, but they were just really worried about that we were just, as soon as this happened, we was gonna start taking roads out.
Well, and let me just clear, clear the air with the public on this. There's an attorney general's opinion that is very clear on what it requires to be a county road. It has to serve a public purpose. And there, the ordinance, the, uh, opinion plainly states if it only serves one or two property owners, that is not a public purpose. So we are looking at some other county ordinances, because the state statutes, and I would invite anyone that has a question to read KRS Chapter one-seventy-eight, and if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't, there's some areas of that statute that make very little sense. I mean, the state doesn't give counties a great deal of guidance on what is a pu- a county road and what you need to consider. But, you know, if you take a road in or maintain a road that shouldn't be according to the state, then, you know, you have to deal with the attorney general, uh, and their criminal investigators. So we have to be, in my opinion, we just have to be very careful how we deal with this because of that opinion. There's gonna be no roads taken out of the road system until, uh, we get some clarification, uh, till we get a new ordinance put in place. Um, I mean, at some point, we may have to look at some of these roads, but there is no plan to start taking roads out of the road system.
Right.
Until we get some clarification from Frankfurt and we get a new ordinance on the books.
And that were, that was the same message that I carried also. I just thought that it might would be because I had gotten those calls, uh, so I thought it might would be just good to bring that up now.
All right, appreciate that. Mr. King, anything? We'll start with Commissioner Robertson, District One, anything, sir?
I'm gonna take the high road on this. Uh, our newspaper wrote an article on, well, I think Jason was in it and I was in it, that, uh, the old buddy system was here again over a bid. I want to make it very clear to everybody in this county, this court has changed. There is no buddy system here. The only thing I asked was, when I mentioned Childers Oil not getting a bid packet, one of their salesmen come and asked me about that. I could care less if Jones Oil, Childers Oil, uh, Rogers Petroleum, Action Petroleum, Trimble Oil, I could care less who bids on it. But I think it's fair for everybody to get a bid packet that's got bid packets over the last five years. Now, he insinuated that I was trying to throw the bid to Childers Oil. That is not so. That's the reason I run for this job. I'd seen this county do this over the years so much that I knew it was reckless. Since Judge Jones has been the judge on this court right here, we have never played the buddy system to anybody. And I want to make that very clear with my two colleagues right here sitting here with me and the judge sitting over there. And I don't have no, uh, hateful or grudges against the newspaper or anything. But I just know everybody does not read this newspaper. And I think it's something that we'll have to deal with further on, but, uh, that's it. I want to thank Sharon, and I want to thank Eric for the job y'all done for me yesterday. We getting a new senior citizens place, and we got water on Brushy, which I was told would never get there. So I thank you all. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Tackett?
Judge, I, like Ronnie said, I mean, I'm, um, I've got, well, my best friend works for Jones Oil. My wife's first cousin works for Jones Oil, and it wa- nothing towards that, you know? Uh, my foot commissioners, they won't have some questions to ask. I voted no. I'm just gonna leave it at that. That's all I've got to say tonight. Uh, I just want to thank the people of this county, you know? We, we've, we've, we've run it the way it's supposed to be run and it's straight up.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes, I, I have to agree with Ronnie and stuff on that, uh, I, you know, we ran for office government. I think that's what we should have, and I agree with Ronnie. I think every company that they are should get a bid package on this. Uh, I don't think that nobody should be left out. Hope, man, uh, that's just my opinion on it. Uh, hope everybody had a good Fourth of July. Uh, hope everything, you know, just in and there these few days, you know, with our neighboring county, uh, Floyd County, just continue to remember those first responders. Remember those families and their days to come. And, uh, you know, a lot of prayers need to go up for those, those families, because they've, it's just, you know, they have the funeral, it, it's the days that come after the funeral that's gonna be tough on them, so that's all I've got to say, just.
Those families in Chicago, too. That's sad.
Um, I just have just a few brief remarks. Um, in nineteen-twenty-nine, my great-grandfather was a Pike County Deputy Sheriff and got shot and killed when my grandmother was thirteen years old and baby in the family was about three, four weeks old. And, um, that was, uh, an, a wound that was, was never healed in any of his children, and they all carried that to the grave with them. I mean, the grief, the loss of a dad, and think about losing your dad, um, who was a sole breadwinner in the middle of the Great Depression. You know, the Great Depression hit in October, and, um, he was killed in November. He's buried up behind Reggie's home place, and, um, I remember in, uh, two thousand and one, right before I took office in the State Center, maybe shortly thereafter, I went up to visit my grandmother's, uh, sister Martha in Maryland, right not long before she passed away, and uh, she would still cry, break up, and cry over the loss of her dad when she was just a little girl. And, you know, after seeing that, um, those families in Floyd County are gonna be going through the same thing, the Fraser family, the Chafus family, the Petrie family. And it's just so senseless. And, um, I think we all need to remember those families in our prayers. And I don't say that lightly. I think, you know, some people want to use the, you know, the little prayer emoji and, you know, but they need to be in, 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 in their prayers because of the pain, you know, children have lost fathers, wives that have lost husbands, um, you know, mothers who've lost sons. I mean, it's just heart-wrenching, and, um, I pray that there is some justice that comes out of this. Uh, I want to just briefly mention that Floyd County Judge Executive Robbie Williams and I talked, um, several times, including on the night of the shooting. I've talked to, uh, Pressensburg Mayor Les Stapleton. I've talked to Floyd County Sheriff John Hunt, Floyd County Attorney Keith Bartley, and I've pledged whatever assistance that Pike County government can offer to Floyd County or to, uh, the families of the fallen officers or those who are in need of help. And I ordered that the flags be flown at half-staff here, and Paul, we'd like to do that through Monday if possible. Um, one thing I just want to bring up, and I just want to throw this out there food for thought. Um, one of the problems that we had officers pinned down, one Floyd County deputy was stranded, uh, as I understand it, behind the wheel and the engine block of his vehicle, and every time he tried to move, uh, he received gunfire in his direction. Another deputy crawled up under his running cruiser that was apparently shot full of holes. And, uh, Robbie, uh, Williams and I talked about trying to locate some type of, uh, police armored vehicle, whether it's an up-armored Humvee, military surplus, or some type of specialized vehicle. One of the things that, uh, you know, uh, I understand one of the deputies was, was wounded. They couldn't get to him. Um, if we had had some type of armored vehicle that we could have at least...
Um, if we had had some type of armored vehicle that we could have at least got in between the, the shooter and the wounded deputies or the, the deputies or officers that were stranded, we may have been able to save a life, or we may have been able to extricate, uh, those law enforcement officers from the positions that they were in. So, uh, at some point here in the next month or two, after, uh, Floyd County gets, uh, a firm grasp on what happened, I would not be, um, uh, reluctant to go in with Floyd County to buy a, some type of up-armored Humvee Military Surplus or some type of, uh, a lot of law enforcement agencies have, uh, those types of vehicles, and you can't wait, you can't wait till, um, something happens and expect the SRT team to come in from Frankfurt to try to extricate those folks. I mean, this was over in the two and a half to three hours before they could get SRT mobilized and get them here. So my recommendation would be that once we see what Floyd County is willing to do, is that we go in with them and maybe if we could get another county to go in. Not sure how much it would cost, but with two or three counties going in on it, some type of vehicle that could be used in those types of situations, um, that could be left at post that they would have readily available, they could get it to any of the surrounding counties in this post district. We had another, uh, officer involved shooting in Paintsville today, where a woman tried to take a, uh, firearm from a, a Paintsville police officer. Then we had another officer involved shooting in Martin County, I believe it was yesterday. Uh, we saw what happened in Illinois this week. We saw what happened in, uh, Texas a few weeks ago. I mean, we live in an evil world, and, um, I don't have an answer for why this is taking place, uh, but it is taking place more and more frequently. And if, um, there is some chance that we could work with some of the other counties to provide some type of armored rescue vehicle or some type of vehicle that we could get air. You know, even civilians, I mean, if you had an active shooter situation, you had civilians trapped, something you could put between the shooter and the, and the people who were, uh, trapped. Uh, only by the grace of God were there not more people killed in this shooting. Uh, I don't know the exact number of rounds that were expended, but from what I'm told, it was a large number of high caliber rifle rounds. And, um, you know, I talked to my friend Bob Shirtliffe, and, you know, Bob's son Ross, who lives here in Pike County, uh, is a, uh, the deputy chief in Pressonsburg. And Bob was so worried that he went to Allen, and he was able to track his son on his cell phone. He had no idea what was happening with his son. And if you guys, any, for those of you who know Bob Shirtliffe, he's a class act. And I could not imagine having my child, uh, trapped or in a, uh, in the middle of that type of situation. Uh, the pain that these families are gonna feel for decades to come may not have been prevented if we had had some type of vehicle like that, but potentially may have. So, uh, at some point in the near future, once I get to talk to, uh, Judge Williams, I may, uh, ask Greg, and Greg, why don't you go ahead and start just looking for some type of police armored vehicle? I mean, it doesn't have to be new. It just has to be something that we could, uh, we could get law enforcement officers safely into a scene or extricate, um, people from a dangerous situation. Uh, Joe Reynolds, who used to be the code enforcement officer in Floyd County, who's now their emergency management director, uh, was severely wounded. Uh, he's related to Roy's wife. I think he used to be a Pikeville Fireman. Is that right, Roy?
Yes, he was on the Pikeville Fire.
He was on the Pikeville Fire Department. A lot of these folks, uh, Detective Petrie was a former Kentucky State Trooper. Not unusual to see him here. Um, I've, I've sat in, in, in the lodge with him before. Didn't know him well, but was always just a nice guy. And, uh, you know, so whatever we can do to improve safety for our law enforcement officers in this region, whether it's the state police, the Pike County Sheriff's Office, I mean, we never know when Sheriff Scott might need this, but we need to have something available that we could have, you know, if we had something like that, we would have probably been able to get it there in twenty minutes. And you had officers under their cruisers for four and five hours hiding. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm a Christian. I don't believe in, in, you know, in, in taking someone's life, but the guy that did this deserves the ultimate penalty. Uh, I don't think that there's, that's just my personal opinion. So, um, again, continue to pray for these families. Pray for the Floyd County community and everybody's been affected, because let me say this. It could just as easily been in Pike County. It, you know, it happened in Martin County this week. It happened in Johnson County this week. I mean, it could have easily happened here. So, um, you know, we respect our law enforcement officers. We have, uh, done all we can to help Sheriff Scott. I think at the next meeting, we're gonna look at the, um, to see how we can go about getting a new radio system for the sheriff's office. Not something that we had planned to do. Uh, you know, we spent one point three million on the radio system for our first responders. But when I have deputies telling me that, uh, you know, they're worried that somebody's gonna get hurt because they can't get back up because of poor radio signal, um, I can't let that happen. I don't think these guys are gonna let that happen on their watch. So I suspect that, uh, we're gonna have some deputies here, and we may be, uh, surely issuing a bid for a new radio system for our sheriff's office. Um, we're doing all we can to help Sheriff Scott. Uh, he's done a remarkable job of putting, uh, family or, uh, school resource officers in all the county high schools. The Pikeville Police Department has done a remarkable job of, uh, of providing security to Pikeville Elementary and Pikeville High School. And, um, but, you know, we still have vulnerable places, and we still need to make sure we're doing everything we can, uh, to help Sheriff Scott, because public safety is a priority for this administration. So, um, with that being said, uh, is there any other business to come before the court?
At this point, I would ask, uh, for Gary Sloan, if he would do the benediction for us, and we would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Father God, we pray. For every father we thank for this day. Father God, we lift those families up to you, all of them. With strength and vigor. Father God, for your officers and billions that was in, Father God, we ask for your and for their families as well. Father God, we give you all praise, all honor, and all glory. Magnify your name to all. Thank you, pray we ask.
Amen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.